I mean, that gentle Dawson, there's a certain Guam is called to order. We left off prior to the recess with Senator St. Nicholas's amendment. So Senator, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My amendment has been circulated to all members of the body and it is for page 23 between lines 22 and 23. To add a new section for disclosure required. I'll go ahead and read into the record and then I'll briefly explain why I think this amendment is important, Madam Speaker. It reads, "Section four disclosure required." Subsection A, "The Government of Guam Retirement Fund shall present to each Government of Guam employee enrolled in the defined contribution retirement plan an illustration of benefits to be received upon conversion to the hybrid retirement plan at the age of 55, 65, and 70 respectively, based upon actual Government of Guam employees' defined contribution retirement plan balance and years of service. Such illustration must be provided prior to employee conversion with at least a 24-hour review period before -- between presentation of such illustration and enrollment in the hybrid retirement plan. The employee shall sign attesting to the receipt and review of such illustration prior to conversion." Subsection B, "The Government of Guam Retirement Fund shall provide an illustration of the impact to pay for Government of Guam employees who are members of the defined contribution retirement plan if they were to convert from the defined contribution retirement plan to the hybrid retirement plan." Those are the amendments, Madam Speaker, and if I may speak briefly on those two amendments.
Yes, Senator, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First, the subsection A, the requirement for the retirement fund to provide a disclosure to the employees who are considering converting, and then giving them an illustration of what their annuity would be at age 55, age 65, and age 70 if they converted. This is very, very important, Madam Speaker, because I want every single Government of Guam employee prior to converting to at least know what their annuity is going to be once they convert. And the reason why this is important, Madam Speaker, is underscored by an email I just received over the lunch break. And this email that I received reads, "Thanks to you, me, I cannot retire in two years. Your SS plan will not help me and my many other friends in Government of Guam. I will certainly pass the word around about how you failed us all." Now, Madam Speaker, this is exactly the kind of misinformation that we need to make sure our people are protected against because more likely than not, most people who are in the DC plan right now, if they convert to the hybrid, will not be able to retire in just two years. If you convert from DC plan to hybrid, you've got to be one of the very, very few who have a very large balance if you're going to be able to retire in just two years. And even if you are, even if this individual may be one of those few, for them to go around and tell all these other Government of Guam employees that they may be able to retire in two years if we go of this plan, will be misinformation circulating to all of our employees and it may make them convert without fully realizing that that might not necessarily be the case. And I'd like to reference within the bill itself, Madam Speaker, that the timelines for being able to retire on a percentage basis of your salary are very extensive with this hybrid plan. Member retirement benefits on page seven. You will only get 1.75% of your average annual salary for each year of credited service with a maximum of 85% of your average annual salary. In order to get 85% of your average annual salary, you have to have 49 years of credited service, which means that, let's say you started working in the Government of Guam Ret when you graduated from high school at age 18, and you have your diploma, which is part of the law, 49 years plus your age of 18 will be how old you're going to be when you retire, which means that you'll be 67 years old getting 85% of your average annual salary. You've got to put in 49 years to get 85%. If you retire at 55 years of age with 25 years of credited service, you'll be subject to a reduction of .5% per month for each month under age 65. So there's a lot of formulas built into this, Madam Speaker, and a lot of, I would say, misunderstanding by a lot of people who think that we're just creating a window for you to buy back into the old plan and reset everything back to normal. That's not what's happening here. That is not what's happening here. This bill is not doing that. Even if we pass this bill, it's very unlikely you're going to be able to retire with an 85% annuity in two years. And what that annuity will actually be needs to be fully disclosed. So this section A, Madam Speaker, in this amendment will require the retirement fund, before somebody signs up and converts to this hybrid plan, they will get a full disclosure based on their own individual balance in their defined contribution plan and how many years of credited service they'll be able to achieve of that, a full disclosure of what their annuity will be at age 55, when the reductions kick in, age 65, when there are none, or age 70, when they should be able to be closer to that 85%. So that's the first section there, Madam Speaker, and it really is important because one of the things that happened when we converted to the DC plan back in 1995 was illustrations were provided, but those are based on projections of the market going up to infinity if they converted, and that led to a lot of disappointment. Now, the risk that we have here is the opposite, where people think that if they go from the DC plan into this hybrid plan, they're all of a sudden going to be able to retire with a comfortable annuity. And that will be equally dangerous, Madam Speaker, because we want our people to fully understand exactly what is going to be required of them if they do convert. So this disclosure in section A, Madam Speaker, is very, very important. And in section B, this second part is equally important because what every employee needs to understand is if you do convert from the DC plan to the hybrid plan, you're going to have more money taken out of your own paycheck. I'm going to repeat that. You're going to have more money taken out of your own paycheck. Right now, in the DC plan, the government contributes 5% and the employee contributes 5%. If you convert to the hybrid plan, the government is only going to contribute 1.8%, and you're going to have to contribute the other 9.5% or so. So more of your own pay is going to be taken out for this hybrid plan. The government is going to be contributing less. Now, my initial concern when I brought this up with the chair was the parity issue. How can we have two employees in the same government system, one getting a 5% match from the government and one only getting 1.8% in this hybrid? And the rationale that I was made to understand from the retirement fund is, oh, if the employee voluntarily converts, then that's on them. If the employee voluntarily says, oh, I don't want that 5% match, I'm okay with 1.8 and more taken out of my paycheck, that's on the employee. Well, I am not comfortable with that, and I want this to be fully disclosed to the employee prior to them converting. Because I, for one, I'm of the opinion that if you're a teacher three in the Government of Guam, you should be getting the same government contribution as another teacher three in the Government of Guam. But we're going to be creating two classes of employees, and that's a separate topic that I'll get into, Madam Speaker, because it makes me worry about future litigation. But that being said, these two disclosures, I think, are very, very important for us to have in this bill before anybody is given a piece of paper to sign to have them convert from the current defined contribution plan into this hybrid plan if it does actually become law. So those are my two amendments I'd like to proffer this time, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Madam Speaker, I have no objection to the concept. This is much like in borrowing, that there's a financial disclosure and you're given 24 hours within which you have to acknowledge as you received all of the disclosure documents, that you know what your interest rate is going to be, what your monthly rate's going to be, what the APR is going to be, what the, everything that, and so the concept is fine. It's not objectionable. My only concern is for the employees of the retirement fund. Is there indemnification for them in the event that their calculations are not correct? Because I'm a little concerned that if a 33-year-old employee comes in and you're supposed to try to show them what it's going to be, what their retirement's going to be 40 years hence, when they retire at 75, I mean, 35 years hence, how are they going to know what the increases are going to be? Yes, maybe you're going to be bringing 15 years of your government service, and they can say, this is how much you needed your actuarial amount to contribute, but what's going forward? If all you have is a high school degree, will you be getting the 2% increase that everybody else is getting? If you go on and you get a master's or a PhD, is that going to change the amounts that you're going to be getting? And if the number is not correct, will the employee at the retirement fund be held liable for misrepresentation? That's my only concern. I like the fact, I think everybody should have as informed decision as possible. My only concern is liability and indemnification to the employees. I wouldn't want them to have to be sued or be sued because it wasn't correct and their assumptions somehow were wrong or something. I'm just trying to figure out how to be able to address that.
So you're not, then, making an amendment or anything?
No.
Okay. Would you like someone to answer your question? No? Okay. On the St. Nicholas amendment, does anybody else would like to speak on it? Senator St. Nicholas, do you want to close? Well, in a minute.
Just a quick technical correction here on subsection B, the second line there, "impact to the pay of," rather than "for," "to the pay of Government of Guam employees who are members of the defined contribution plan."
On that amendment, then, the third line from the bottom, we read, "impact to the pay of Government of Guam." Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
No objections? So ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I agree with the retiring speaker. You know, the question does become indemnification, or is there any kind of liability? And that leads me to the underlying question of this whole thing. I mean, if the retirement fund was assuming a 100% conversion ratio, 100% conversion of the existing DC plan employees to the, from the current DC plan to the hybrid plan, how exactly were they going to achieve that? Who is going to meet with these employees and who is going to show them the pros and the cons? This is what you may get, this is what you might not get. And that's the same kind of window that was left wide open on the DC plan that led to a lot of people converting that are now very much regretting it today. And so what this amendment is intending to try and do is to give some kind of framework by which the retirement fund must communicate with these employees. So my assumption based on this particular section is that, first of all, let's say you're 33 years old, you're making $40,000 a year, and of course, you do have maybe 20 more years, 30 more years of government service. What the retirement fund will be required to do is, if you convert, how much of your balance and how much of your current years will get you what kind of annuity? And then everything else is left to whether or not you even stay in the government, or depending on whether or not you move up in the government, because the reality is, your salary can go up, your salary can go down over the course of the remainder of your career. But the employee needs to fully understand, if I convert my balance now and my years of service now, what kind of annuity will I have, assuming all else being equal, when I hit age 55, or age 65, or age 70? Because the employee needs to have a full understanding of exactly what it is they're getting themselves into. And again, I referenced that email that I just got, that individual who thinks they're going to be able to retire in two years, what exactly kind of annuity is he imagining? You know, I pulled up on the staffing pattern who this individual was, and they make $100,000 a year. If this individual thinks they're going to get an $85,000 annuity by converting their current DC plan balance into this hybrid after just two years of having made that conversion, I seriously doubt that's the case unless they already have enough to be able to almost achieve that on their own within the DC plan. But based on the tone of the email, it's very obvious this individual does not have that kind of a balance. But they have that mentality that that kind of conversion is going to somehow save them and give them an $85,000 annuity. So it's very important, Madam Speaker, that the people who are converting have at least an idea of what kind of an annuity they're going to be getting if they do convert, and they have a full understanding of what their paycheck is going to look like after they convert, and they have more of their paycheck being taken out for this new hybrid retirement plan. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So on the amendment, which you have, which is a new section four on page 23, and we're voting for both A and B, and not bifurcating those, so are there any objections to the amendment? None, so ordered. Senator, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My next amendment has to do with the effective date of this act. And the reason why I'm looking to amend the effective date is because of the actions that we've taken on the 16th of June and the actions of our Congresswoman that was taken subsequent to that. I believe it may have already been circulated? Yes, it has already been circulated. It's to add a new section five, I'm sorry, to amend section five, effective date. This is on page 24, lines nine through 10. Right now, in the bill, the effective date is effective upon enactment. This seeks to make it effective October 1st, 2015, which is next fiscal year. And if I may have an opportunity to explain?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, Madam Speaker, in June 16th of this year, we passed resolution number 37932 that all of us voted in favor of, to seek social security to be an option for the Government of Guam. Our Congresswoman on July 30th introduced House Resolution 5274, which is a bill to basically do that, get us authorization to be able to voluntarily participate in the social security system. If this does become possible, based on the existing language as substituted in the bill, the retirement fund will have to come to us and give us a plan on how we can incorporate social security into the overall plan that's being presented here that includes the hybrid option. Now, we just got this passed on June 16th. Our Congresswoman just introduced it in July 30th. And right now, we are in the lame duck session of Congress, and we've got at least, in my opinion, give this at least one fiscal year to try and see where we are with social security as a viable option, given the fact that we actually have a bill on the floor of Congress. I think it would be very prudent of us to at least, we've gone back and forth on this issue for five years, to at least give us another fiscal year to be able to find out exactly where social security is with respect to where our Congress is at on it. I mean, you know, it was mentioned earlier that war claims was pursued so many times and never accomplished, and it's something that we need to continue pursuing. But this particular issue was never really pursued in the form of actual legislation on the floor of Congress. And just based on my cursory read, I mean, the bill itself is barely a quarter of a page that was introduced by our Congresswoman. It also, by the way, impacts American Samoa, who also has an interest in getting this kind of exemption. And I would speculate that as relatively simple as this House bill is that's currently in the US Congress, I wouldn't be surprised if it goes through the formalities fairly quickly and gets passed, at least within the next year. That would create a whole new perspective for us with how we're going to be able to evaluate this retirement situation. Now, in repeated articles that we've read from the retirement fund, and as was stated earlier on this floor, everyone's so doubtful about whether or not we can get social security. I think that right now, this is the closest we've ever actually gotten to it. And I would like for us to be able to fully incorporate the idea into the overall adoption of whatever this hybrid plan is going to be when we finally do approve it. And with that, I'm very leery about us passing this bill and making it effective upon enactment and sending us down a whole course only to find out in May or June that we actually could do social security, and where are we going to go from there? Because we already have so many people who converted, we have so many new employees that are now signed up for the hybrid plan, we have no idea how we're going to incorporate social security, and then it becomes one of those things where, oh, yeah, we can do it, but it's too difficult, so never mind. You know? So I would at least like to give us the opportunity to wait until next fiscal year for this act to be effective. What we will do in passing it is we'll basically set the clock running. And our Congresswoman's going to have to work very hard to get this bill passed. I'm going to do everything I can to lobby to get this bill passed. And hopefully, within the next fiscal, before the next fiscal year, we can get it passed and then incorporate it into the overall picture of what we're looking at. But for us to have the effective date of this bill immediate and then wait and see if we get social security, and then say, oh, what are we going to do now? It kind of sets us on a course. It's going to be very difficult and even more complicated to figure out if we did not just wait until at least the next fiscal year. So I would like to proffer this amendment to give us some time for the thing that we voted on just this June, and that which our Congresswoman just put into Congress on the 30th of July, to work its way through the halls of Congress, and to give our Congresswoman a chance to be able to go out and lobby for what it is that we asked her to lobby for, and to give us a chance also to lobby for the same. And then we can factor it all into the overall picture that I think we pretty much agreed was something worth looking at back in June. So I'd like to proffer that amendment, that we make the effective date of this act October 1st, 2015.
On the amendment, Vice Speaker, and then Senator Limtjako.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'm not going to object to it. I just want us to realize that the Congress is two houses. And as the Congresswoman has said every year for the last 10 years, she has managed to get the reparations bill passed by the House of Representatives, but not in the US Senate. And so I'm glad that it's only until next, the beginning of the fiscal year, we can plan for it in the budget for the next year. If we were going to do this, I would prefer that we start with the new year, but I would not object to starting it in the next fiscal year so we can plan it into the budget and let's see where we are. But I just want us to get realistic about how legislation moves through the US Congress. This is not one of their major pieces, but I'm willing to at least give this a chance.
Senator Limtjako.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, as I listen to all the good points that the retiring speakers have brought up regarding, you know, the current hybrid plan as it is, and going through and recalling and attempting to get through the 400-plus-page committee report since it's released this morning, which is not possible to do, you know, I'm concerned that once again, we're rushing in to addressing a very crucial piece of legislation that we need to thoroughly address and we need to thoroughly vet. Now, when I have my turn on the main motion, I will speak more to the points of my concerns with the bill, but as it relates to the amendment, Madam Speaker, in relation to the amendment, it's, once again, we're attempting to pass a bill, of course, predicated on whether or not, within that fiscal year or within that timeframe prior to enactment, that social security potentially could be an option. We're doing it backwards. We are absolutely doing it backwards. Why would we put a piece of legislation in predicated on a potential other solution to exist, only to go back and change it all over again? What is the sense of urgency? And I don't downplay the fact that the defined contribution plan needs to be addressed. It's very well-known, and it absolutely has to be addressed, and I commend the author of the legislation for starting the dialogue on it. But that's what we should be doing, is starting the dialogue and continuing the dialogue until we have all of the questions answered, until we have all of the solutions proffered, and make sure that we make an educated vote on it. It troubles me that during this election period, that we would take such an important issue prior to the election and make it a political situation rather than with coalesse work through and find a viable solution to address this issue. It's very troubling to me that we would try and shove this in, and I just don't understand the motivation behind it, because yes, it has to be addressed. It shouldn't be addressed in the span of two or three weeks. This is a problem that has been brewing for some time. The retirement board has already acknowledged the issue. Yes, they went through 16 iterations, and probably the most educated person on the alternatives and how to solve this issue, as well as the unfunded liability of the defined benefit plan, Senator and Speaker Ben Pangolinan, he knew how important this was. And from the little time that I spent with Senator Pangolinan, he would have done whatever it took to get this passed if it truly was the solution. He would have done anything that it would have taken him to make sure that he got it through. In the two years that I have known him, I know that that would be true. And so I'm concerned, I raise the same concerns as the retiring speaker does, that even though he's seen 16 iterations of it, it hadn't made it to the floor. And yet, we're going to shove it through in three weeks or less. I think we're trying to do it in a day, which is completely irresponsible. We need to take our time with this. We need to get it right. Now, I'm not up here to argue about the merits, although I do have some questions, because a lot of questions are unanswered. I know, Madam Speaker, you have questions, and I know the rest of my colleagues have questions as well, and hopefully, we can get through them. But we need to take our time with this and make sure we get it right the first time. This amendment doesn't necessarily do that, because it's predicated on whether or not social security passes, and therefore, even if it doesn't, let's say that social security is not a solution, what's to say that this truly is a solution? And it's not properly vetted, for all of the same reasons that the retiring speaker has already pointed out, and more of which that I'd like to cover, and I'm sure a lot of our other colleagues would like to cover as well. So, Madam Speaker, I object to the amendment, and I object to the fact that this bill shouldn't really be in here. It really should go back to committee. It really should go through the process, and not to say that the Vice Speaker hasn't already gone through the public hearings. It requires more than that. It's just not any other bill. It has huge ramifications. We're talking about $118 million addition to the unfunded liability, which is already pegged at $1.4 billion. And that's assuming that the rate of returns that we're using the calculations are even accurate. Has anybody checked their portfolio in the last five days? Has anybody seen the effects of the downturn in the market recently? Are the calculations that were in the proposal and what was presented to the legislature indicative of what we can expect in light of the recent fluctuations in the market? What happens when that rate of return isn't 7%? Does it increase the cost of the employer contribution? It would have to. So it's no longer 1.8%. It would go up. What happens to the unfunded liability portion of that? It would have to go up. Once again, Madam Speaker, we're not dealing with just any other bill. This bill in its current state would increase the unfunded liability. And I want to reiterate the point that the retiring speaker pointed out, that I don't know, especially for the public, let alone those who would even take the time to read through this 400-page committee report, do the defined contribution plan members, do they really understand what this does? Do they really understand that it doesn't automatically make them have the same benefits of the defined benefit plan? Do they really know? Do they know that their contributions will double? Do they know, are they prepared for that? Right now, in the defined contribution plan, I can make the determination that that money, and I'll finish up shortly, Madam Speaker, that money, I can make a decision whether my current daily expenses take priority over my future obligations to save. I can make that determination. If I can't afford to put an additional 5% in today because I need to address my childcare, I could do that right now. I could change my contribution from 10% down to 5% to the 457 plan, and I can make that decision, and I can use that cash flow to pay for my child's education or daycare. You double this in this plan, you're requiring it of that individual. They don't have a choice. They don't have a choice. So, Madam Speaker, I object to the amendment, not so much because of what it does, because I agree with many of the points that the retiring speaker has mentioned. I object because in its totality, holistically, we shouldn't even be moving this bill forward. We should be taking our time with it and getting it right. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator, cancel? Senator Etta, Tom Etta.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly do not object to extending the enactment date to October 1st, 2015. Quite frankly, I'm Quite frankly, I'm not confident that the U.S. Congress is going to be, have its ducks in order by then to be able to have acted on the matter of, you know, Social Security for Guam or whatever. But I think what I would like to see on this amendment is that upon enactment of this bill, that the disclosure requirements be initiated, the disclosure requirements that was required by the amendment that was just passed just prior to this, that those disclosure activities, requirements be initiated then, and that it be completed within 180 days. And I think that that is important, because one of the things that my colleague has, you know, repeated time and again, is the fact that, is the fact that one of the underlying assumptions of, I guess, of this whole thing, is that there's going to be 100% conversion from the direct plan, the direct contribution folks to this hybrid. And I don't recall, I sat in on the first public hearing, and I don't recall any mention about any sensitivity analysis that was done as to, well, then what happens if only, you know, 90%, if only 70%, if only 50% of those in the direct contribution plan decide to transfer over? And some may not want to transfer over for the very reason that my other colleague here has indicated, that, you know, by transferring to the hybrid plan, then I basically, my discretionary income would be effectively reduced, because now I would have to contribute more to my retirement plan. And so, I would like to make an amendment to this amendment by adding a sentence at the end, which reads as follows. However, the disclosure requirements in section, and I'm going to leave that blank to be inserted, in section, whatever, shall be initiated upon enactment and completed within 180 days. And I think what that would do is that then it would give the retirement fund that time period to really see if, in fact, everybody is going to be running over to the hybrid plan, and if we only get a handful, then maybe that may be a deal breaker. And we have to step back and say, well, maybe we should repeal this law, and let's start all over again. And so that, Madam Speaker, would be my amendment to this amendment regarding effective date.
Senator, that's a little bit longer than I would normally expect. I need for you to repeat it again one time.
Okay. So it would read, however, comma, the disclosure requirements in section four, whatever it is, shall be initiated upon enactment and completed within 180 days. So if that thing, if this bill gets passed in November, November, December, January, February, March, April, all this disclosure analyses would have been completed, and at that time, retirement fund can come back and say, okay, the underlying assumption that the majority of direct contribution participants will convert, in fact, is a true assumption.
On the Senator Tom Ada's amendment on this new section, on the effective date after the 2015, to say, however, the disclosure requirements in section four shall be initiated upon enactment and completed within 180 days.
Madam Speaker, you know, it was just pointed out to me that that amendment would also then affect another section here on page five.
Madam Speaker, point of order, don't we have to deal with the objection at hand prior to making an amendment to the amendment?
No, this is, no, you can do an amendment to an amendment. It's only when you have two, yeah, multiple, but usually it's three, and then, of course, you must, you can do two.
Okay, I apologize.
Okay, it's not a problem. I'm sorry, you were saying that there, it would affect?
Yeah, I guess on page five, Madam Speaker, on line seven there, it talks about the eligibility.
Eligit, that's the eligibility.
There's the election window. I guess that.
Where?
Is that page five, page six?
Senators, we're going to take a break.
Can we take a break?
Okay, thank you. Back in session, and earlier I was trying to explain that we have two different amendments here that actually we need to do with one before the other, but I understand that Senator Limtiake might want to offer something else. Senator, before I-
Well, Madam Speaker, I get, I think, to uncomplicate things, I'll just temporarily withdraw my amendment.
Well, that's why I'm saying, can you hold on for a moment, because I think something will happen before that, so you may not need to.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, just to make it administratively easier, I will withdraw my objection, so that we can proceed with the amendment to the amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay, thank you then, Senator, for that. No objections, so ordered. So, we are then now, there was an objection that was withdrawn then, so that now takes us to the amendment, to the amendment, which is Senator Tom Ada's amendment, and Senator Ada, you still have the floor on your amendment.
Yeah, I'm done.
Oh, you're done, okay. So, I understand then is that the First Amendment provided is to actually take the effective date to now October 1st, 2015, the next fiscal year. There is an additional amendment to that added on by Senator Ada that says, however, the disclosure requirements in section four shall be initiated upon enactment and completed within 180 days. So, that's Senator Tom Ada's amendment. So on that amendment now, you would like to speak on it?
Sure, can you just, I'll get the, I'll get the-
Oh, then that means I have to recess again to make a copy for that, of that. So, we're going to take another recess. Everyone should have a copy of the amendment, which is Senator San Nicholas's first, and by the way, that will be renewed, that will be renumbered, and that will be section seven. And the handwritten amendment is Senator Tom Ada, and on that amendment, an amendment to the amendment, Senator Munia Barnes here, recognize.
I think, Madam Speaker, I, maybe not so much on the objections of Senator Tom Ada's amendment, but if that were to pass, it would be to the amendment to the San Nicholas amendment on the extension, because my question is, and maybe I missed it, is are we waiting to see if Social Security is going to be a part of this plan? And is the retirement going to have authorization if that gets approved? And what if it doesn't get approved? I mean, I understand, based on how many years this has been going on, which is 10 years plus, and you and I did go to those public hearings, and we stayed till almost 10 o'clock each night, I just, I mean, are we putting, I don't know, I think we're regressing instead of progressing.
I'll have senators, in this case, I would allow, Senator. San Nicholas, can you please answer the question, which is going back to your amendment, which is the October 1st, 2015?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The intent of going to October 1st, 2015, is for us to be able to give the Social Security effort at least that much time to manifest, in case we're able to push it forward with our Congresswoman and with any lobbying that we do here on this side. Even if Social Security doesn't happen in the Congress, then by virtue of that amendment, this act will become effective on that date. But the reason why I'm proffering this amendment is because I don't feel like we gave Social Security enough of a chance to even see the light of day in Congress. I mean, we asked our Congresswoman to introduce it, she did, and all of a sudden, we're just running ahead of it, saying we're just going to do something else entirely, and just leave the Social Security window open for another section here. What I would like is for us to be able to factor the whole, the whole picture into the equation, where in the event that we do get it within the next, before the end of the fiscal year, that we're able to calculate exactly what that's going to cost and what direction we're going to take. And that's kind of why I would prefer that we wait until next fiscal year to make this effective.
Okay, thank you. Was he able to answer your question, Senator?
Madam Speaker, I think my concern is, would our retirement have that authority anyway to work on it? And what we're trying to do to work this hybrid- anyway to work on it? And, and what we're trying to do to work this hybrid plan is to address the, I guess I would say, the deficiencies of those 7,000 employees who have been putting into this, this D.C. plan today, which some of the members have admitted may have been good back then, but not good today, and if we're going to continue to wait, and just to check to see if Social Security is in, we haven't been included in that, and will retirement have that authority anyway? And, I don't know, maybe, maybe it's even more discombobulated to me. So, I, I have reservations about this, this, this timeline. If we're going to do this, and we're going to pass this, or we're going to try and pass this through, I'd like to see it worked, pushed full forward, and not have any delay. So, I guess I'm just going to respectfully reject or oppose this amendment right now.
Okay, that, the date is the October 1. Okay, Mr. Vice Speaker, your hand was up. Were you attempting to respond to Senator Munya Barnes?
Yeah, I will take on the word, object.
Yeah, object, she objected. So, Mr. Vice Speaker, did you want to attempt to respond to her question, or you're okay?
Senator--
Senator, the Vice Speaker.
It is--
I allowed her--
The bill is very time-sensitive, and there are two time things. One is, when would the new employees be going into the hybrid plan? Is there a need for disclosure for the new hybrid members after a certain date? And if it's the issue of disclosure, then maybe we can just change the effective date to 2016, January the 1st, giving the Congress a whole, full year, because in that way, all the other dates for when the elections are supposed to be made in the bill could all be changed from 15 to 16. See, because the way the bill was written was, it was going to go into effect on January the 1st.
Of 2015.
Of 2015. And so, all the dates in the bill have September 15, I mean, September, October, all kinds of different dates, April the 1st, 2015, and instead of going back through all the nine different sections that have those, if the, if the effective date is 26, January of 2016, then all the dates that have 15 would go to 16. But there's, but that leaves only one other question. Will all of the employees that are going to be hired in the next year be under the D.C., or will they be hybrid? Or is the implementation going to be put off completely until--
And will we do it until--
January 2016, so. I just point that out.
Yes, and I'm sure that everyone I can see are all thinking about that. Well, procedurally now, we're going to need to go to Senator Tom Addis' amendment, to the amendment, and that will be the handwritten amendment that you have before you. So, are there any objections to the Tom Addis amendment? None?
No, but there, I want to speak--
Oh, you want to speak in that? Oh, that's why, I'm so sorry. Yes, yes, yes. Senator Yamashita on the Tom Addis amendment.
I think, Madam Speaker, so, Senator Addis' amendment is, however, the disclosure requirement in Section, and I'm thinking that's--
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm looking at the amendment offered by Senator Tom Adda, and it says, how are the disclosure requirement in Section, I'm thinking that's Section 3, because that's referring to the amendment that we just passed that was offered by Senator Mike S. Nicholas? That's correct, right? The disclosure required?
Yes, that's what it is, which is the new Section 4.
Oh, it's a Section 4, okay. So, it'd be Section 4, and it shall be initiated upon enactment and completed within 180 days. My, Section 4 was my first question, and then the disclosure requirement is that each government or government employee enrolled in the defined contribution requirement will be spoken with, and will test to the receipt and review such illustration prior to the conversion if they choose. Perhaps the main author of this bill might best be able to answer this. I'm wondering if 180 days is going to be sufficient time for every single member to be met with? I don't know if six months is enough. I don't know if they already have an idea of how many would want to come into this plan, into the hybrid, and if 160 days really is enough, or 180 days is really enough. That's simply a--
Based, okay, so based on the, I guess if you go October, to October 2015, is between, now is like almost a whole fiscal year, that, that disclosure, that's how I'm reading that. So, then it's not just the 180 days, because the date, unless, of course, the date has been changed again. I mean, as suggested maybe by the Vice Speaker, so.
So, so then--
But, Mr. Vice Speaker, do you want to answer the question? Because the main author, oh, so in this case, which, who do you, would you like to answer your question? Senator S. Nicholas, or the Vice Speaker?
I was thinking the Vice Speaker.
Okay.
Because I think he has a wider understanding of everything that's involved here.
Mr. Vice Speaker, do you yield to the question?
Yes, I, yes, Madam Speaker. I really can't say whether or not 180 days is going to be sufficient, but I do know that the current Section 4, on the bottom of page 23, instructs the Retirement Fund that no later than December 31st or 14th, that the Board of Trustees shall approve such plans and documents, rules, regulations, administrative procedures and forms as may be necessary and appropriate to implement the hybrid plan under this, under this bill. And so, as I understand it from the Retirement Fund, they fully intend that before the end of this year, they will have all the rules and regulations on how this disclosure requirement, how everything else is going to be done. They've been planning this for some time, and they have rules and regulations on what everybody has to do, and how the actuarial computations are going to be. And I'm not sure how many employees are going to take advantage of going up, or whether or not they'll just sign an opt. I, I don't know. But I do know that the Retirement Fund does have plans and has rules and regulations. They, we're not adopting it in here, there's just that they, they're instructed to, before the end of this year, to have the, the rules and regulations and procedures, and all the documents that are necessary to be able to assist the employees in the conversion. And that's what, what they had written into the bill to, to take care of that. I, I don't know if that's an answer, but that's all I know.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. Senator, you still have the floor? Is there, okay. So, is there anybody else who'd like to speak on the Tom Addis amendment? Okay, on the Tom Addis amendment, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Now, on the S. Nicholas amendment, which changes the, the effective date on October 1st, 2012, I know that Senator Munya Barnes had said that she objects, so I'm going to call for the vote. Would you, to close then, Senator? Okay. Senator, you need a few minutes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, just to clarify again, because there's some questions about the, the amendment. The intent of the amendment is to give us, give us till the end of this fiscal year before anything gets implemented. And so, what I will follow it up with is a request for a technical amendment for legal counsel to go through the bill and adjust all the necessary dates for us to be able to have everything pushed back until the end of the fiscal year. And the reason why, Madam Speaker, is twofold, of course. One, we're trying to give Social Security a chance to work its way to the Congress. Two, is we're talking about new hires, and when, and are the new hires going to go into the hybrid plan, or are they going to go into the D.C. plan? The reality, Madam Speaker, is that when we passed this budget, and when it got signed into law, it was under the current rules of the game. It was under the assumption that the government's contribution was going to be 5%. If new hires are going to be hired in a new hybrid plan, and the government contribution is only 1.8%, then where's the other 3.2% going? It behooves us to, to, to implement this at the next fiscal year, because we've already incorporated the budgetary projections based on the 5% government match, not the 1.8% government match. And that's one of the problems of us having moved this bill forward at this time without factoring it into the fiscal year budget. Unless I can be corrected, that the fiscal year budget and all the new hires that are potentially going to be hired within this fiscal year are in fact being budgeted at a 1.8% government match instead of a 5% government match. But I don't think that that's the case, because this bill wasn't passed at that time. So, that being said, we really should not implement this until the next fiscal year, so that we can factor all those things into the new hiring process, as well as any of the conversions and the reduction in the government contribution side. Because imagine, Madam Speaker, if we do pass this, we don't change the effective date, and it becomes effective immediately, and we have, you know, 100% of all 7,000 D.C. plan members, which makes up, you know, what, 2/3 of our government, convert from the D.C. plan over to the hybrid plan, then all of a sudden, the government contribution rate drops from 5% down to 1.8%. Where's the other 3.2% going? We already budgeted for it. So, this needs to all be factored into next year's budget, and this should therefore not be effective until next year. And that's the reason why we're proffering the amendment, so that in the event that the bill does pass, we at least have the stopgaps in place to properly budget for it, and also to give Social Security a chance to, you know, come onto the scene, and hopefully we can have both of those things done when we implement this at that next effective date if this amendment passes. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Yep.
Point of order, Madam Speaker?
Okay, yes.
Yeah, I understand the request of the retiring speaker to have the legal counsel be the one to move all those dates so that it corresponds with the amendment, but I, I submit that that's more than, than something that the legal counsel should be doing. I think the Retirement Fund should have the opportunity to, to take a look at the amendment, juxtapose it with the bill that they've prepared for in conjunction with the Vice Speaker here. So, I move that we take a recess to give him an opportunity to, to change those dates, so that we can be clear what we're voting on when we vote on this Nicholas amendment.
Well, I was going to say first that we need to take the vote to determine whether that amendment would be appropriate at that time, should it fail--
Well, we never know, because it, because the court--
I understand, of course, yes.
--the dates will correspond to--
Okay, so, before we call--
So, that's, you're right, you should call, if the decision is not carried out, and then the amendment passes, then, then we'll take the recess to have it work according. Is there an objection or a call?
Oh, there's an objection to--
Well, he's closing.
You're right, and the object, your objection was to the date, and then I was going to call for the vote, but as he was closing, he made, of course, the general motion then that legal counsel would make the appropriate changes in the bill that would reflect, of course, the new enactment date.
Okay, Madam Speaker.
And then Senator Rispichard said that because, rather than allowing legal counsel to do that, that it should be coming from the Retirement Office. And of course, my response was that even before then, we need to decide whether, one, is it going to pass? If it passes, then I, then we, we need to work on those dates. If it doesn't pass, then there's no need to change any, any dates.
So, the, the proper amendment needs eight votes, or the amendment has not--
Yes, yes. Because there is an objection. So, Senator S. Nicholas is going to need eight votes then in favor of changing the date to October 1st, 2015. I understand, and you're right. So, and I'm, I'm going to go ahead, unless somebody can, would want to object to, you know, my decision to move forward with the vote, and then if it passes, then we will recess and have that conversation with the Retirement Office. If it fails, then we, we continue to move on. So, is there any objection to my ruling at this point?
Well, there are--
Okay, thank you very much. So, then on, there is an objection to the S. Nicholas amendment of October 1st, 2015. All those in favor then of the S. Nicholas amendment, please raise your hand.
As amended.
Yes, of, of course, as amended, because Senator Addis' amendment had already passed. One, two, three, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. It passes. So, now we will then recess, so that we can get the date. But thank you very much, Senator Rispichard, for your optimism. I appreciate that. Recession.